You should be able to hear the room in yourself. So the people at home are not able to hear the mics in the room.
We can like hear it, but it's not very clear.
I'm gonna say.
Hear us now.
It sounds the same.
I'm on broadcast. So, uh, I don't have to respond. It shouldn't be energy. Jen, you're in there. They're all on. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Now.
But when I speak, can you hear me at home now?
Yes, well, you can definitely, you're talking.
Max is saying.
The participants at home are saying, "Not really."
And we can't hear them.
And that is, yeah, can one of you guys unmute? Leanne, can you say something?
Get important features of signs.
Max, if you can hear us, say something.
Hello.
Yeah. And it's very, very clear. I can almost not hear them.
I can like hear you. Like, I can't in theory hear what you're saying, but it's like not the way it's supposed to be.
I was gonna say, you're, my, 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 Max, my age is showing.
Oh, God.
You know what? You probably can do this better than I can. I don't know. I have the body, I have like the body of a 95-year-old woman. Like, I can barely hear or see or do anything.
Just be doing instructions. She is.
Up next.
So, sound back for people who are at home. Can you hear us now?
It sounds the same.
And maybe you can hear. Is it the speakers in this room that are turned on now?
I'm watching it on.
But they're on Zoom.
Oh, the Zoom feed? Oh, that's on the Zoom end of it. Wait, are they watching you on TV?
No, they are signed into Zoom.
The Zoom? Okay. Uh, well, that's on the Zoom end of it.
We didn't check the speaker off the mic.
Is everyone on here?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, broadcast live, you're fine. Everyone's coming through live.
But we can't hear the people from home. And in previous meetings, we've been able to hear everything through the mics. So my question is.
Oh, the Zoom meeting should be kind of into the house audio.
Yes.
You were coming pretty, through pretty clear, Diane.
How are you? We're running. This is all awkward.
Let's sing.
My dad is walking up my face. I can hear us now.
Mrs. Seither, is it possible for you to be unmuted like Ms. NATO is? Because we can hear her really well when she talks. Um. I don't know. That's my least suggestion.
So Zoom people, I am muted myself, so you should be able to hear me now. Um, the IT personnel is calling to figure out, for some reason, we can't get the Zoom on.
Here is just the power board for this.
Green line.
This is our connection to this whole thing.
Hear me, but we won't be able to hear you other than through my computer audio. So that's obviously not gonna work.
This is the piece that works. Right? Because he was like, oh, I already started that. But if he didn't press the Zoom button, then the Zoom's not working through the room. Yeah.
Yeah. That might be the key. All right.
Somebody on Zoom.
Hello.
Room, please.
Hello, I'm talking. Can you hear? Oh, they're applauding. Yay.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, now, can you hear us through my micro, through my in-room microphone?
Yes.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Excellent.
Lovely.
It is.
Mrs. Seither muted herself.
So I wonder if one, can you hear now? Okay.
So you were all muted just a second ago. That's why we couldn't hear you.
This computer. I was getting, I had mine on and the rest of you did. So the feedback, I think because this is the main computer running it, we need to have this one stay on. So the rest of you can continue to hear us. This is working. And can someone else just give us a mic check? From Zoom land.
Testing. How was that?
Perfect. Okay. I think we're, I think we're okay. Okay. Sorry about that, everybody. Agenda item 2.0 is attendance. Diane, could you please call the attendance? I would love to. Mrs. Giftis?
Yeah.
Dr. Gill?
For now. Yes, here.
Here.
Ms. Layton?
Here.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Here.
Mrs. Seither?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Miss Giftis. Thank you. And we, and I apologize, I did the pledge out of order. Agenda item 4.0 is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda this evening? Seeing none. Agenda item 5.0 is public comment on agenda items. This evening, I do not see anyone in the public who wishes to make public comment. If you are on Zoom and you would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. You will have three minutes to address the chair. Please keep your agenda, please keep your public comment to items on the agenda. And I will let you know when your time is up. And I ask that you please respectfully wrap up what you're saying. And with that, I will turn it over. Jen Lad, I will promote you. And Jen, you should be in. And when you're ready, you can unmute.
Okay, how's that? Good?
Perfect.
Great. Thank you. Um, also, just as a matter of, um, I don't know if it's possible for those of you in person in the meeting to turn on your videos. But I know that that is always helpful for the rest of us to be able to see you, um, at least on Zoom. It may not be an option when you're there in person, but it would be great if it was.
Hold on, Jen. Thank you for that. I don't, we don't, we didn't know that you couldn't see us at home.
Sure.
We will, we will see if we can get that fixed. Thank you.
Yeah.
I would say go ahead with your public comment, Jen, and then.
Okay. All right. Great. Thanks. Um, I just, you know, as always, I just want to start by thanking both this board and all of our teachers for just the incredible work and effort that have been put into this year. The more I think about it, the more I just, I'm just so deeply grateful for, for all of that hard work, including all of our other staff. I just, I really can't even imagine. Um, beyond that, I just wanted, the point really that I wanted to make tonight was that, you know, I've, I've made comment to this board a number of times over the past few months and emailed with you guys and um, just, you know, gone back and forth. And it has been made crystal clear that this board is steadfast in adhering to state guidelines in terms of all things pertaining to, um, how our schools will handle COVID this year. And, um, also, I, you know, heard and can appreciate what it may feel like to not be a public health professional, but perhaps be in a seat where you feel like you are being asked to make public health decisions. And I'm sure that that is incredibly hard, too. Not knowing no good way out of any of this, really. I just ask you to, at the very least now, to please be consistent in that adherence to the federal CDC guidance, state CDC guidance, and state DOE guidance that are all now saying it is okay and safe for our kids and teachers to be outside at a minimum, just outside, without having to wear a mask if they choose to do so. If someone chooses to keep wearing a mask, that, that should be totally fine by all of us. And if, you know, if raising that point perhaps makes you think or, and worry about the risks to our kids, um, again pertaining to COVID, I would just remind you, as I did in February, that the symptoms for all of our kids are already here. They are already suffering from this disease. And it may not be the clinical symptoms of the COVID or coronavirus itself, but they are suffering. And we now have that documented as we've learned through the building process, the committees that have been set up at each building. I read in detail the summaries from staff and, um, the committee on some of the challenges that, um, our students are facing this year. And they're really, they were really troubling, really significant. All, all grades K through two notably behind in writing. Notably behind in social and emotional learning and a whole host of other things. I know that all that information is available to you guys, too. But anyway, I, I just, um, you know, I, I just, I feel so strongly that this could be a really bright spot at the end of the year. There's not a lot of the school year left. And that allowing our kids to, to, to play freely and be with their friends and see their friends smile. My son, um, he lost a tooth last week and, um, he was really excited to show his teacher. But he was really nervous to take off his mask at school just to show her that, which is really important for somebody in that age. And, um, I just think of, you know, all those little missed opportunities like that. And we can't go backwards, that's for sure. But, um, I just ask again that you, you allow this to move forward in Scarborough as it is in so many other communities in our state and around our country. And as we've been informed, as safe by, by the agencies that we've looked to all year for this type of guidance. So, thanks.
Thank you, Jen. We did have one email public comment sent to us, so I will take this opportunity now to read that into the public record. It says, "Dear Board, I am writing to advocate that we remove the mask mandate on children, especially while outdoors. It appears that this has already been done for middle school and high school sports. So it would be logical that kids would not need one at recess or any other time when they are outside. Given that we can take our children almost anywhere, starting Monday, without a mask, and the outdoor mask mandate has been lifted, it doesn't make sense that school is the only place these kids need to wear a mask while being outside. To quote one of our kids, 'I wish we didn't have to wear a mask because I don't remember what my friends and teachers' faces look like. Thank you, Ethan and Sarah McRae.'" Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment this evening? Freyla Turpinian, I will promote you to panelist. Thank you. Freyla, you should be able to unmute.
Is it okay to have my video on, too?
Sure.
Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve on the DEI Committee. I think this is the appropriate time for all agenda items, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So, um, as you know, we're hard at work meeting to review the data from the surveys that you sent out so that we can create recommendations for an action plan for this board's consideration. I really appreciate that you recognize the importance of this work to help make all of our children have a safer, more robust educational experience. This work's really invaluable. And since we've started our work, we have naturally also addressed some current events at our schools that are impacting our community. Um, this context is essential for us to discharge our duties effectively. But since this is not technically within our charge, I'm asking you to conclude in our charge to propose changes that would allow for us to raise awareness of the work happening in the district. It's so important for us to work within the authority that you grant us, and this ability will help us do our work better. Most significantly, this would allow us to communicate more effectively with you and the community. So I'm just speaking on behalf of the proposed DEI amendment to the charge, and I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment. Thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. Um, I think for the time being, Shannon just asked if it was better if everyone who's in person hop on the Zoom link. I think since we're not broadcasting to the people at home who are using Zoom, that that's probably the best thing to do for right now. Um, but I do think we all have to stay muted because otherwise we're gonna get that.
Yep.
Reverb. Thank you, Shannon. Agenda item 6.0 is the K-12 DOE Framework Update. And at this point, I will turn it over to Sandy.
So Diane has been very busy. Diane has been very busy with this work, and she actually is going to share the slides tonight on the progress that has been made.
Perfect. Thank you, Diane. Sure. So, um, for those of you who are not aware, the Department of Education updated their framework for PK to 12 in the state of Maine as of May 14th. And so this evening, um, the goal here is to update you on those changes in the state. Um, knowing that here in Scarborough Public Schools, we are still taking in most of this so that as we move forward, we can think carefully about how this will apply to Scarborough Public Schools. So what I've done here is highlighted the major changes. Um, and then I'll also talk with you about, uh, the significant pieces that continue to remain in the framework. So, um, to, to begin, one major change is, uh, up until now, there was an expectation that adults would maintain a six-foot distance from students, and that has been lifted. And the expectation for adults is the same as it is for students to students at this time. And so it is expected that a three-foot distance be maintained for adults. Masking and physical distancing, as written in the framework, are, um, are no longer required for time spent outdoors. But there is a caveat there because contact tracing is still required. And so we'll talk about that a little bit, um, later. And I'll also talk with you a little more about what pooled testing is in greater detail. Plexiglass is no longer required in front-facing spaces or when physical distancing can't be maintained. So that is another change. Uh, school libraries, again, we've spent most of the year really exercising a lot of caution in terms of book selection and the use of our learning commons spaces, uh, for students. And so one of the pieces here is around just, um, you know, attending to seating areas for spacing, very minor change. There is no continued recommendation for distancing at bus stops. That was something that was in the initial framework. And again, something that we relied on families and students to, um, self-assess. Moving forward, visitors and volunteers will no longer be excluded from schools. So that is something that we welcome as we look ahead. Field trips will become allowable moving forward to the extent that they are planned carefully and health risks are considered. Um, in terms of, as we look ahead to having performances again, formerly, the distancing requirement was 14 feet between a performer and a member of the audience. And that has been dropped down to six feet. And another welcome change is, um, the use of locker rooms can be utilized again. And so, uh, you know, that may seem minimal, but if you are a middle school or a high school student and you have PE class, you probably appreciate being able to change into other clothes. And, uh, that had not been something available to our students. Um, I'm going to spend a little bit more time talking to you about, um, something called pooled testing, which is a new risk mitigation strategy that is available to all districts. Uh, this came out a couple of months ago. Uh, but with the new framework, they have incentivized it for districts and for families as it pertains to their students. And so, again, the things that I'm sharing with you tonight, we have not made decisions about. We're really just, uh, providing information, points of information at this time. So as it relates to pooled testing and the incentivizing that I've mentioned, districts who choose to participate in pooled testing, which again, I will explain, and have at least 30% participation, will no longer be subject to any distancing requirement. And so as we move ahead and, uh, consider that for the fall, that would, if it was something that we as a district signed on to, would eliminate, um, the need for us to consider what is that maximum number of students that can fit in this space? The harem and work, for example, that we shared with you recently. Um, the one caveat, uh, whether you're in pooled testing or not in pooled testing is the six-foot rule for eating or drinking is going to continue to apply. And, um, if you have talked with your students or with anyone involved in the schools, that is probably by far one of the biggest hurdles for our leaders and our staffers to solve. In terms of pooled testing, families who opt in for pooled testing for their children would eliminate the need for their children to have to go into quarantine if there was a positive case in the classroom. Um, obviously, that is probably a bigger thing at K to five where our students don't have the opportunity to be vaccinated. Um, and we know that at grades six through 12, there are many families that are choosing vaccination for their children. And any person who is fully vaccinated is not required to quarantine. But for those unvaccinated persons, um, participating in pooled testing would eliminate the need for future quarantines. And certainly, I, I can think in my own head about a number of individuals who have had multiple 10-day quarantines this year. And so that certainly has had an impact, um, on many families and on many staff members. So, um, here's my little tutorial on what is pooled testing. Um, pooled testing only happens if parent provides consent to participate in the program. Again, for us not to have to follow that three-foot distancing, we do have to meet a threshold of 30%. Um, but again, I'm just providing you information on how it would work. Um, students would be test, people participating in pooled testing would be tested once a week. Again, the goal of, um, regular testing is that, um, you know, this is a mitigation strategy and an ongoing surveillance measure that has been proven, um, to work in places with low prevalence of COVID-19. And there are other states, um, before Maine that have been utilizing this. And so some of the organization that's involved is, you know, you need someone to be in charge of overseeing the testing program, someone who is the logistical person. Again, you know, these might be the same person, could be multiple people. That, that's a local choice. And then you need someone observing students. School nurses might be helpful, um, in doing this, and that might be one, one place that we might look if we chose to do this. We might also, um, take a look at who might be specimen collectors. It doesn't necessarily have to be the school nurse. Um, it basically enables for that regular testing. This slide says every student, every week. Again, it is not necessarily every student. It is the students, um, that have, um, gotten that consent to participate. Um, it's a self-swabbing, uh, situation. I have a short three-minute video that I'm gonna show you in a minute so that you can visually see. Because I think, I, I certainly am a visual person, and I was trying to imagine what it was like myself. But it basically, uh, you know, a student has a swab that's, you know, kind of the size of a Q-tip. If you've had to have a COVID test, um, certainly, I think, I remember when I had my first one and saw the size of the swab. I was a little overwhelmed by that. And so that's not the case for, for this program. And, um, so students self-swab, they, um, collect all of the swabs into one tube, and they test them as a pool. And, um, and a courier picks up, uh, the specimens, and the district gets the results back within 24 to 48 hours. And, you know, the goal is that the pools come out negative. If there is a pool that comes out positive, then the individuals in that pool are, um, given a rapid test. are given a rapid test. Those are, again, if the school, if the district signed on to this, those would be given at school, or parents also would have the option, you know, to have that done in the community by another provider. Again, it's done by trained staff, nurses or specimen collectors. This kind of gist goes over that. This is the place where I want to show you this video.
This Oceanside Verbo is about to become the backdrop for an unforgettable vacation memory. One of the rare.
There's actually no blocking to this video. All right, so that's that's basically the overview of that. And so I will back to the slide. And again, I just felt like that would be helpful so that people could get a visualization. You know, again, if this was something that Scarborough Public Schools decided to move forward with, local decisions could be made about where's the best location to have this happen? Because, you know, some some districts might choose to have that happen in in a regular classroom. Other schools might designate a central location that students filter in and out of to do so. But, you know, as you can see there, it's it's basically a 10-minute activity once a week that would happen. If we look at the next slide, again, in terms of participation, guardians would sign a one-time consent form to opt their students into that pooled testing. It is seen as a mitigation strategy and another layer of protection to help us know if there is any COVID present. And it is a relatively quick way to detect anyone who might be positive, especially as we think about the possibility that you may have asymptomatic individuals who might not know that that they have the virus. And again, this is a mitigation strategy which is endorsed by the CDC. And, you know, guidance has been issued around the safety of doing this and also it increasing the ability for continued in-person learning without that start-stop of quarantine. It is free for the for any district that signs on to participate. And so we would be provided with all of the materials, all of the testing that would be conducted that are sent to the state lab would be provided at no charge. The cost to the district obviously would be in the time and perhaps staff designated to help move this forward. Other pieces that are still in place in the latest DOE Framework update. Obviously, we are still going to continue to ask everyone to continue to self-screen on a daily basis. That is a way that we ensure that folks who are onsite are safe to be here. As I mentioned earlier, there is the requirement for continued six-foot distancing for eating and drinking and for mask-wearing indoors. And so although, you know, the mask mandate is being lifted in the state by the governor beginning tomorrow, I believe, that mandate has not been removed for schools as it pertains to indoors and on transportation. Hand hygiene is another strategy that we will continue, as well as PPE as another mitigation strategy, you know, in specific situations. So when that, in our, you know, in our in our current environment, when a teacher might have to provide hand-over-hand assistance to a student, for example, they might have an additional layer of PPE, they might wear a shield in addition to their mask. And so that will be something that would continue continued discouraging the the sharing of personal items. And so if, you know, students have math manipulatives, we have been really cautious about making sure that everyone has their own supplies and would continue to do that. And then as it regard, as as it pertains to busing, I literally took the language off of the framework because there is some vagueness there. And it is to minimize the number of students on the bus within reason. And so that is very helpful for us as we consider the interpretation of that. And I'm being facetious there. Our next steps, again, as I said at the beginning of the presentation, we're being very thoughtful about consideration of these framework changes as they apply to our day-to-day work with students. And so there's a lot to be considered here. One change that is going to be made immediately is that masking and physical distance is in regards to masking and physical distancing as it applies to outdoors. And at the K-five level, after thoughtful consideration, and certainly, Superintendent Prince can talk about this more because this was, you know, some thoughtful conversation with our building leaders and also consultation with some of our surrounding district partners. It was felt that continued use of masks for less structured recess when when it's difficult for students to maintain distance or to self-regulate. And so our principals really want to make sure that our kids are able to enjoy recess. We have to maintain that somewhat of a distance still. And our principals want our kids to be able to safely enjoy their recess. However, we are in agreement to elimination of the requirement of masking for more structured outdoor time. So for example, the weather is getting beautiful. We have a lot of teachers who might be taking their students outdoors for some outdoor instructional time, certainly. That would be an appropriate time for our students to be unmasked for those activities. And you can see that at six through 12, we have eliminated that requirement. And again, the difference there really was our K to five schools provide more opportunities for very large numbers of students to congregate. And, you know, I will just say, in part of our conversation with our principals yesterday, one of the things our principals were just very mindful of is, you know, everybody wants to keep everybody safe. And our principals said they understand what the science says. But we also don't want to put 100 kids into quarantine at the very last few weeks of school. We have, I think, just over 20 days of school left. And if we think about the number of days that is for hybrid, you know, it's about half of that. And so that was the request that they had made. Sandy, I don't know if you'd like to speak to that anymore.
The only other thing I would say is if a classroom teacher chooses to take their class outside to read a book or something like that, you know, 20 kids or 18 students, then the principal principals felt that it'd be okay to take the mask off because it's much more manageable, controllable. And usually, it's a more organized setting than just playing on the playground. So that's the only difference that I can think of that would add to that.
Turn my mic on here. Thank you, Diane, very much for that. Does anyone have questions or comments for Diane and Sandy at this point? Leanne, I see your hand up, and then Shannon, I'll go to you.
I actually have a bunch of questions about the data and the numbers, Diane. And I hate to put you on the spot, but going back to the 30%, how does that factor in for like the high school and the middle school where we have so many students who may be vaccinated? Do they count towards that 30%? Or is it 30% on top of those that are vaccinated?
So that's really a very great question. And also is a great example of why we're being thoughtful in thinking this through. That is one of the questions that we have sent back and are waiting for more guidance on. And so I would love to answer that question, but it has not been answered for us as of yet. But it is a great question, right? Because if 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 people are taking the steps to make sure that they're fully vaccinated, I too am really curious about how does that 30% calculate in? Is that for unvaccinated individuals? And so our nurses have been capturing lots of questions this week and fielding those to our state nurse consultants.
Great. Which may go into the next question of, if we're looking at the lower levels, is it based on 30% in a classroom or in a grouping? How would that work?
Right. I think my understanding from the webinars that I've attended and the FAQs that I have read, it's not 30% of each cluster. It would be 30% overall. But again, I really want to know how the vaccinated piece fits in. But if you look at the literature at face value, it's, you know, 30% of your overall site. And that includes students and staff, so staff can be included in that.
Okay, because I had read it a little different. So this is good that it's an overall and not building in specific.
Right. So again, you know, we are continuing to dig in and get more questions answered. And that's why we just really want to be super thoughtful about this and make sure that as a decision does get made, that we feel like we have all of the details upfront.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Jean.
My question was actually the same as Leanne's, so you answered it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? My only comment would be to the communication piece. You know, being able to educate our community about what exactly this would mean, making sure that they can make an informed decision for their family, you know, whether to opt in, making sure that people feel like they have enough information to make that decision. That's going to be a big lift. And so I'm sure that as more information comes out, you know, you'll be able to answer those those questions confidently. But that's going to be, if this is something that the district chooses to pursue so that we don't have to adhere to those distancing regulations, which obviously, you know, could really make things a lot easier for going back to the fall. My brain is just click, click, clicking because there's there's a budget component that we're trying to figure out. And, you know, I'm sure there's a hiring component, and we don't want to miss this opportunity to hire the potential staff we need. But if the community is really eager and opts into this decision, then we may not need all of those staff. And that changes our our thinking around, you know, those hires and our budgeting. So this is this is exciting news in terms of it just gives us another thing to think about and another avenue. But there's a there's there's some urgency there, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I think we can move on if there's no other comments. Agenda item 7.0 is a finance update on the FY22 budget, and I will turn this over to Sarah.
Thank you. And I think Diane's just going to bring Kate in. And then either Kate will share a presentation or or if Diane has it, she can share as well. But we're just going to go kind of briefly through a presentation that we've covered before. Just give everyone a little bit of an update on where we are with the second reading tonight. Kate, when you are on, I will let you take it away. And I think Kate will address your question, April, about, you know, the 12 staff that are currently in being paid for, plan to be paid for by the S3 grant.
Awesome. Thank you.
Don't don't let me forget to come back around to that as we get through this process. I was told earlier this week that when I was coming in on Zoom from outside of the meeting, I was coming in really loud.
You are.
That is still true.
I I'm not really sure exactly what to do about that because I'm talking in my normal voice. So I will try to modulate a little bit here. Step away from my microphone.
You're fine, Kate.
You're it's perfect, Kate. Yeah, you're good.
I'm I'm I don't want to shout budget numbers at people. It's bad enough you have to listen to me in the first place. So I think, who's driving the slide deck? Is that you, Diane?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so I think and I hope that a lot of this material is going to look really familiar to you all. But we did want to run back through what has, where we started with the budget. The school board passed our budget proposal, the Leadership Council's budget proposal on March 18th in first reading. And this is the way that it looked. And the the numbers that you're seeing right now are for the operating budgets. General fund is our K-12 budget that the citizens of Scarborough vote on. And then we also have adult ed and school nutrition budgets. The capital budget isn't represented here, but that'll come up a little bit later. And then if you want to go to the next slide, Diane, as pretty much as as soon as we put the budget out there, we started to think about the elements of it and and share those with the public. This slide represents the elements of the budget that are reflecting back on FY21. Fiscal year 21 is where we are today, this current school year. And we wanted to make note that we had some investments that we had made due to COVID in FY21's budget to school nurses and a special education teacher. And that we were hanging on to those for FY22 because they are still critical, playing a critical role in our district. It also points out here that there's 23 bus driver positions. We didn't add 23 bus driver positions. But what we're saying is that we have the full complement of positions available to us to fill. Unfortunately, we seem to be going backwards a little bit with that. We were down five bus drivers, and now we're going to lose another two. So we're we're still not really making ground, but we have the budgeted funds available if. we're, we're still not really making ground, but we have the budgeted funds available if, is it St. Anthony is going to send us some bus drivers? We've been leaning on him a lot this week. The budget that we have, our original proposal removed some of the COVID funding. I should do little quote marks with that. COVID funding that was added in FY21. And it restores some positions that we lost in FY21, because we were, we were reducing our original budget ask by about $2 million before we got done with the budget proposal for this current year. And then it adds two and a half positions, a halftime social worker at Scarborough High School, to address some of the social and emotional needs that our students are facing coming back from the pandemic environment. And it also adds to special education ed tax at the high school to address some changes in state legislation that allow our special education students to stay in high school longer for, for more years. The five classroom teachers, which is highlighted in yellow, were actually not officially removed, but removed in conversation from our budget proposal right at the very beginning, because we learned that we were going to be able to use federal funds to, to fund those positions. I think if we can go ahead, Diane, we should get into budget adjustments. So between first and second reading in any budget year, there are changes that take place. Typically, it's because we get new information about outside costs. For example, Anthem rates, Anthem Health Insurance is a huge driver for a budget, and we don't typically have those numbers at the time of first reading. So in, in this slide, you're seeing sort of a summary of the various reductions that we've taken in the general fund operating budget and the adult ed operating budget. And also a big add to the general fund budget, because we had a too low projection of what our debt service cost would be in FY22. And so as we were taking away expenditures that we had projected, we also wanted to add enough funding to make sure that we were covering those costs efficiently. I should point out at this moment that all of this information is in the supporting documents that's attached next to the board agenda. I believe the board members all received that in an email as well. And it's about 30 pages of detail, but there's a couple of pages that are in a really nice blue color that basically go into a little bit more detail about what these individual reductions represent in our budget. So what we're looking at here is a net reduction in our expenditures of $500,000. This slide talks about revenues, and we are increasing our revenue estimate. So the combination of, I should get April to do her, her math formula chart. The combination of expenditures versus non-tax revenues is what creates the school's tax ask, which is the bottom line that we request from the town for the budget overall. So what we're doing here is we're increasing our non-tax revenues. We got the revenue estimate for Adult Education School subsidy, which was up a little higher than what we had projected. And we're also increasing use of fund balance here. And what that means is that we've got projections out to the end of FY21. And we were able to ascertain that we had sufficient extra funds left over, or we will have as of June 30, to apply more of that money to the FY22 budget, and again, reduce our request for tax dollars. This slide talks about capital improvements, and that's the, the capital budget is a separate budget. But it's also part of the school's overall tax ask. Some of the items in the capital budget are funded with tax dollars. Some are bonded, some are used reserve funds. But in this case, we're looking at items that would go to the tax, tax request. And we have reduced projects for several reasons. One, because we've got tighter quotes on some of the items that we're actually aiming to do. So we're able to say, oh, that's actually going to cost us less, and we know that upfront. We're also deferring some projects that were proposed, that we're just going to put off. Some of those things will be able to accomplish a little bit of them incrementally in our operating budget. And others, like the Quentin Drive paving, will just be deferred until we feel like we can take that on again. So we have here a reduction to CIP expenditures. We also have a reduction based on the funding source for CIP. And again, the capital projects can be funded with tax dollars. They can be funded with bonds, municipal bonds that are sold. And they can be funded with reserve funds. And the town finance office with the town manager typically are the ones who assign the funding source based on the type of expenditure. So we don't really tell them what to do. But in consultation with Ruth Porter, the town finance director, and myself and the town manager, we determined that the reserve funds, the school impact fees that you've heard a lot about, would be a great use, a great source of funding for our long-range planning ask in our capital budget. So again, what that does is it reduces our, reduces our need to ask for tax dollars for that expense. So here you see a net reduction to the capital budget, which also goes to the bottom line. This slide is a summary of all the changes, reductions to, reductions and a small add to the original budget proposal. And Sarah Leighton has the pleasure of reading a very long and complicated motion for you that says, you know, here's what we're reducing in each of these budgets. Here's what we're adding in each of these revenues. Here's what the new numbers are going to be. But the bottom line result is that we've been able to, from first reading, reduce our request to the town for tax dollars by $1.4 million. And, you know, that's gone a long way to helping the town overall achieve their tax rate goal of an increase less than 3%. So we're really pretty happy about that.
Kate, can I just jump in here for a second?
Please do.
Never mind. Maybe you're going to show it right now.
Am I?
Oh, I was just going to say, like, when I talked to Kate earlier, and this can obviously change, but so you guys are aware, I think where that puts us, combined with town council, is well under 3%. I think it's somewhere in the range of like 2 to 2.5 is probably where we'll end up. So, so, you know, still a little bit of work to be done between now and their second reading. But, but good news.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. I didn't have an official tax rate comp page, which is the sheet that the town finance office does with all the elements of the budget, including, you know, county and all the various reserve funds they have. They have, it's a very complex chart. So we're just a little piece of that. Yet, but the tax rate proposal that was shared at Town Council Finance Committee yesterday, I believe, was 2.76. And that did not include any additional subsidy school funding, which is, I think, the last slide that we have for this presentation, which is the good news that came in this week. So all of what you're seeing here came before any addition of school funding from the state. This is just a snapshot, again, of what you saw in the beginning of the picture of the first reading. And this shows you where we're landing with second reading. And if you're looking in all of those exciting 30 pages of backup details, there's a chart that, that actually, I couldn't fit on the slide and have anybody see it. But there's a chart that shows the first reading, and then the second reading, and then the change. So that's kind of helpful as well. But what it shows you is that our net budget or our tax ask for operating is down below 4%, which is a pretty great number for us. I think I figured out my talking problem. I think I'm talking in my podium voice. I have a podium voice, you know? I'll, I'll just have to come get in the room with you guys and wear my mask, and that'll, that'll make it better. So this slide is about the additional subsidy that was, the information was released to us just this Monday. Subsidy is the name that we use for general purpose aid, which is the money that comes from the state of Maine Department of Education to fund K-12 schools across the state. And so the governor has a proposal on the table with the legislature for a supplemental budget, which they're calling a change budget proposal or budget change proposal, which would add funding to the overall state budget and deploy it in many different ways. And one of the things that the budget proposal, change proposal does is to allocate more funding to K-12 education. And I don't know if you saw some of the press releases in, stories in the paper and information that's been flying around this, this week, but it's, it's a celebration, because there's been a statute on the books for, I don't even know how many years now, that says that the state is expected to fund 55% of public education, K-12 education in the state. They've never made that goal, never reached it. They've come close a couple times. But this budget proposal actually does that. And in doing so, it provides a big chunk of additional subsidy to Scarborough. It's 977 billion, billion, that'd be great. $77,000. And it was announced, and the numbers were given to us on May 17. So that's the great news. The not so great news is that the legislature has to pass this supplemental budget. And I spoke with folks at the DOE who know things about how the legislature works. And their response was, you know, don't hold your breath, that it's, it looks good, but you need to go ahead with your budget process. And so what's cool about this is that a statute already exists to help school districts and towns deal with the problem of having, the good problem of having additional subsidy come along after their budget has already passed. So I've given you on this slide the language that we would use to signal our intent of how we want to allocate that money. There are three ways that you can allocate additional subsidy under the law in the state of Maine. One is you can spend more money. Two is that you can use it to reduce the local tax rate by applying it as additional revenue to your budget, even though your budget has already passed. And three is to create a special reserve fund that's for school capital projects. And there are some, there's a whole nother statute that, that covers the development of a school capital reserve fund and what that is and how that works. But it's tied in with this statute that says this is one of the allowable uses for additional subsidy. And as long as you, as a board and the town council, both vote to apply any additional subsidy that comes along in one of these ways, and as long as we allow the voters to know this, when they go to referendum in June, we put it right on the referendum information where we put the rest of the budget numbers that we post, then we don't have to go back and have another referendum and say, oh, gosh, our budget has changed. So I'm going to pause for a minute here and, and suggest that this could probably be a topic of conversation, because I think it's a great idea to do a split of some of the funding going to lower the tax rate, and some of the funding going to a capital reserve fund. I think a lot of other people share that that's kind of a cool idea, but we have not had an opportunity for the board to even discuss this as an action item. So I know the action items before you right now are the second reading of the budget, and I think everybody's pretty clear on that material. But this is all new, so I want to give you folks time to have a discussion about this.
Thank you, Kate. Questions or comments for Kate? My one, oh, sorry, I'm in person. Alyssa, I'm like looking at my monitor.
So I just didn't understand, Kate, are you saying we should have a discussion now about, about this subsidy?
Well, I'm not directing you to do so, but I'm, I think it would be a fine idea, because what's going to happen is that we're going to need to take some sort of action on this. If we don't take action, and I, by we, I mean you, if we don't take action on receipt of additional subsidy, and we pass the budget as it is, then the budget goes forward to the council, we can still take action at, at a later date. But if we don't have it incorporated into our second reading and the material that goes to the voters, then it would simply, the revenue would simply come in as excess revenue and go to fund balance. So we wouldn't have made a determination about what to do with it. It would be just the same as if I put in the budget that we were going to get $5,000 in revenue from selling a school bus, and oops, we sold two school buses and we got $10,000. It would just be excess revenue, which isn't a bad thing, because then later on, you could use the fund balance to lower the tax rate the next year, or build a reserve fund the next year. But this would immediately affect FY22's budget. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Shannon?
Thank you. I just, I have two questions. And the first is what happens to, well, I want to speak to the point that you said that we would send information to the voters, but what happens to the absentee ballots that have already been mailed?
Well, the absentee ballots go out before the budget order is posted. That's kind of the way that it's always been. The absentee ballots cannot be returned until that order is posted. And when I say the budget order, that's actually the, the town council's statement of what the municipal budget looks like, and it incorporates the school's budget. And there's a separate sheet that shows the different school budget categories that's posted at the polls. And it's also posted online. So it, it's a, it's a, it's always been kind of a fraught question. It's like, why can't I take my ballot out when there isn't even a budget yet to vote on? And, and the shorter answer is that we won't take your ballot back until there is a budget for you to vote on.
Gotcha. I, I guess I thought that you, I, I thought I interpreted that we would have to mail every voter something. So that doesn't sound like we would need to do that.
No, we would only need to indicate our intentions on that same sheet that's posted at the polls and that's posted online to guide the voters when they vote at referendum. You know, if you vote in person, then you can see the thing posted up on the wall. But if you vote absentee, then one hopes that you can look at it online.
Gotcha. I have one more question. I'm so sorry. And this is more towards the capital improvement piece. So one of the things that has been sitting in the back of my mind that worries me a little is that we put off the paving of Quentin Drive, and we just do patch ups. But in the long run, if we, if we keep doing that, I, I feel like we're spending more than just doing the work and having it done. So would this be, would the, would the paving be something that could be in, in the capital improvement? Could we use a piece of that capital improvement fund to do the paving? Is that something that you're thinking, like along those lines?
I wasn't really thinking about Quentin Drive specifically. I think the, the thing that was in my mind was related to the way that the town has been talking about creating a capital reserve fund, which in fact, they just did yesterday. And the conversation there has been mostly around what they call soft costs or planning costs, engineering costs for projects. It's just recently become, well, I, I don't know if it's become a law or a practice or a guideline, but the SEC and the IRS have said that you cannot bond, can't sell a municipal bond for planning unless it's immediately attached to an existing project. So for example, if we were going to build a new building tomorrow, and we had some engineering studies and some, you know, architecture drawings that we were going to do, but the building was already approved and ready to go, you could bond that as part of the whole project. But if you're just thinking about or planning forward for a building that doesn't really exist yet, like our K2 situation, you, you either have to use local tax dollars, or you have to use reserve funds. And I, I call that one out, because we're actually using reserve funds now. We're using the, the school impact fees for that. So this type of a So this type of account would allow the school department to have their own fund for things like that. Planning, studies, engineering, things that are not eligible for bonding or for, and would have to fall to the local taxpayer to fund. So when you, when you say Quentin Drive, I think my feeling would be that we should put Quentin Drive back on in the budget next year and that it should be bonded.
Just, can I just add that? I think to Kate's point, this is all kind of new information and we haven't had a chance to really process it as a finance committee. Although I guess I'll speak for myself personally, I'm supportive of this model, but we'll have to meet as a committee to figure out how it actually works in practice. Like how we decide how those funds are used, what goes in and what doesn't. So a little like more to come on that, but I, you know, I think as a first step, this is great and it's also in line with town councils practices. And so they're supportive of it as well, which is always a good thing, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And Sarah, you know, to your point, the board will have to vote to establish a reserve fund, which means that the board will have to create the parameters for that. And of course, you're working under a statute that says you can do some things, but not other things. But it would be really clear upfront and Kristen was talking with me about this earlier that, you know, we would need to have a workshop and we would need to talk about what is a reserve fund and what are our intentions and how would we use it and what's the process. But we don't have the subsidy yet either. So we have time. We would signal our intentions now about creating that fund, but we wouldn't actually do that work until we actually had a framework for what it is and what it means for us.
Thank you very much. That's helpful.
Yeah. And Sarah's right. This is all new stuff. We're sort of going, oh, cool, we could do a thing.
So Kate, is that language, language that you recommend and support?
The, what's on the slide? Yes. It is, it is the correct statutory language for this board to take action in the event of additional subsidy. The language is actually provided to us some years ago by both Drummond-Woodsom and Maine School Management in a, in a timeframe when this, when a similar situation was occurring, when the budget was increasing at the state level. And we were in a position where we thought we were going to receive more subsidy. And in fact, the board at the time actually voted to allocate that subsidy in exactly the same way. And then, of course, the bad news was that the new subsidy wasn't sufficient to actually give us any more money. Because we were minimum receivers and we were well below the level and the money that was put into the state level budget was not anywhere near as large as what's being provided this time. So we never got any new money, but we had the intent at the time to use it in much the same way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kate. That's really helpful. I would just add, to kind of refresh everyone's memory, that we did ask for, you know, a side COVID fund in our FY, I'm muted, who's unmuted? In our FY21 budget, we had asked the town council if we could, you know, set that additional, I think it was 533,000 into that side account. And we had kind of said if we don't need to use it or if we receive federal funds, you know, we would be invested in returning that to the taxpayers. And so here we are in this exact position where we're finding ourselves with additional subsidy, hopefully if this passes legislation. And I think that this signals our intent to, to, you know, make that right. So I think that's great.
It's a great point. I guess my only process question for you, April, is how we, because it's not on the agenda, we can loop it into the second reading, but I would just need some guidance on how to motion for that.
Sure. I think when we get to new business for FY22 budget, make all of your motions as you would for us to approve the FY22 budget. And then at that time, you can also make a motion for the council, for the board to approve the establishment of a reserve fund based on the statutory language that Kate presented.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
At least that one doesn't have a lot of numbers in it.
Are there any other questions or comments for Kate before we move on? Excellent. Thank you so much.
Peace, Kate.
Thank you.
Moving on, Agenda Item 8.0 is a DEI Committee update. And the agenda item is a review of the charge. And we do have a slide for this. I had posted the original charge that we had approved back in December. And I believe that the DEI representatives from the board have an amendment to the charge that they would like us to consider. And so at this point, I will turn it over to Shannon to kind of frame this conversation and and discuss the potential change to the charge.
Perfect. Thank you. As you already heard, we as a committee, well, let me say this first, DEI work as a whole is very cyclical. So we have instances where we're moving forward and we're making improvements. And then work happens either nationally or in the district or locally. And we, we have to come back and kind of sit in it for a moment, if you will, and talk about it. And then we continue to move forward. So it's not, it was explained very well to me, the DEI work is not a straight line. You don't just start and end. There's a lot of coming back and and discussing things. But as we have seen as a committee, or it was not in our charge to do that. So we wanted to include this, but be really careful in the wording and how we approach this because we wanted to be sure that we are within our parameters, which is that we're providing recommendations to the Board of Education. What we are not doing is carrying out policy work. We're not initiating investigations. We're not disciplining. That's really a role left to administration and not, not to us. So our role is to review the data as it stands, to review the data and then to make recommendations. What we want to add is the line about raising awareness of work happening within the district so that when we do have work happening around us and nationwide, that we are able to discuss it.
So before I open it to questions and comments from the rest of the board, this wasn't an action item for the agenda when we set the agenda. And this kind of evolved over the course of the week. The board did receive this updated charge a couple of days ago and it was posted. So we've all had time to see this ahead of time. But at this point, Shannon, I would ask that you make a motion to approve the updated charge and then we can have discussion of the, of the motion.
Sure. So I would, I make a motion to approve the updated charge of the DEI Committee.
Second?
Okay, now we can have discussion. Nick, I see your hand.
Can you hear me? I think that's a yes. So the additional line that you, that is on your slide to be added to the charter is, is, I actually wrote it down earlier from the public comment received about raising awareness of the work happening within the district. I guess the line feels a little bit vague to me. And so I just kind of want to know, what is the intention of that line? What is the work that's happening in the district that this committee specifically is going to raise awareness of and to whom?
Diane, can you? I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to you to help me a little bit. The problem we're having, or not problem, but the situation we find ourselves in is that work is happening in the district that the committee wants to discuss and wants to have conversation around as it relates to DEI work. I think, for lack of a better, I think that Diane so eloquently put it earlier. It's almost like when you buy a new car and you're out driving around and you see all of these instant, you see the car everywhere you go. It's kind of, that's kind of what's happening on the committee. So we, we have work that we're trying to do and we're trying to get to the place where we provide recommendations. But there are events occurring around us that require discussion and thoughtful approach to, I guess is the best way I can say it. So our awareness, if necessary, because it is within our charge, if we, we could provide recommendations and raise awareness to the board. So one example I would give you is the letter that was written on behalf of the administration and the Civil Rights Club and the, the board in regard, a few months ago, in regard, regard to events that happened in the community. So things like that that have occurred, that, that's work that the district did that we then discussed in the DEI Committee meeting. So the awareness would go, could go to the, would really go to the board because that's our charge, right? Our charge is to bring things directly to the board. So we want to be mindful of that and stay within those, those lines and parameters. So I, we would not, I guess, answer your question in a long way, we would not be deviating from that charge.
I can probably provide another example and I wonder if that might be helpful. So for example, at our DEI Committee meeting last week, a group of students from the Civil Rights Club shared with us an education piece that they had provided to their peers at the high school as part of advisory. And so there are members of the DEI Committee who, because they are not school personnel, might not have awareness of that work happening. And yet, as, as members who are aware of that, that's important for them to know about what are the things that are already happening.
So Nick, it, it was really difficult and, and you know, what you're pointing out is, was reflective of that difficulty because I think it's a really fine line of what the committee is trying to do. The, the focus of the committee is what, what the charge is currently. However, I don't, I don't think it's fair to ignore some of the realities that are occurring. For example, when that racist incident occurred in our community and it impacted our school community, I think it made sense for the DEI Committee to discuss it and to then make a recommendation for a letter to be written. However, there's a very fine line between that and what would be administration's role. And so we've got to be really careful about that. But for me, as a member of the committee, I think that the data is one thing and that event really put it into context. And the discussions of people, with people on the committee helped assist me in understanding. And so it's like, you want to flesh out that data a little bit, but not overstep our boundaries. And so I guess it doesn't seem right to sort of ignore everything that's going on around us that, that, that could be impacting our students and staff members if it involves an issue related to DEI, right? Because that's why we're there. Yeah, at the same time, try to do the broad work. So we're trying to focus on the broad work, but there are examples occurring in our community that need, require attention. And this is the committee that's committed to assisting in that work.
So I, may I just say something and follow up really quick? Because this has been really important feedback. So my question comes from a place of concern and this is not easy to talk about. So I'm going to be very maybe overly careful with my word choice and what I'm about to say. So there's a distinct difference between raising awareness of work happening or using emerging events to, to be new sources of data for the policy work that this committee has been charged to do. There's a very distinct difference between that and, you know, the, the fear of ignoring the realities that are occurring and this committee becoming a pragmatic response group to basically mobilizing and stewarding the response to events that come down the line. Those are two very important things. One is policy related and one is procedural. And I think the procedural piece is something that is a board sanctioned committee. We really need to try and avoid. And so that's my worry about this is that, you know, this line, raising awareness of the work happening in the district is, is, is pretty, I don't want to call it innocuous because it's very powerful, but that line doesn't say anything about responding to emergent events in an operational way. And some of the explanation that you just gave, Alyssa, does suggest that. And I'm assuming that's not anyone's intention. But I think we need to be careful as a board sanctioned committee that we don't drift too far away from our principal charge, which is using the data that we have and the data that we discover through daily events to inform policy, which is what the board is primarily charged with doing. So I, the importance of this work cannot be overstated. However, its place as a board sanctioned committee can be overstated. And I think that's, that's my principal worry. If, I'm going to stop talking because I think I said everything to say.
Yeah, no, it's totally understandable and we, if I was being honest, we struggle with that too. Because we, it's profoundly important that we don't overstep our, our charge and our boundaries and what we're in, what we were created to do. But how do we, how do we do, how do we have these conversations without update? We have to update the charge to have our conversations because otherwise we're completely operating outside of our, what we're created to do, right? And when we created the charge originally, we knew what we were doing with the data. We had no idea that there would be work happening outside of that data that we would also need to, need to review and discuss too. To your point, I mean, I like the idea that it's data we're discovering. I mean, that's essentially what we're saying. But the end result is that we are, the next bullet under is that we are only making recommendations to the board. So we do not step under over administration. We do not step over the board. We provide recommendations only to the board.
I'm going to go to Max, then Sarah, and then I'm going to put myself in the queue too.
So I didn't actually ever receive like what the updated charge was. So I'm not really sure like the exact wording of it. But like based off the conversation, I personally think that it's a very good idea. I'm not sure if I share the same concerns that Mr. Gill has. Dr. Gill, sorry, Dr. Gill. Just because like the purpose of the group, at least from my point of view, obviously you have your charge to like review the data, but also like it's created with the intention of obviously diversity, equity and inclusion. In order to improve on those conditions, you have to have conversations about them. And if you're not being allowed the room to have conversations about just like specific cases that have come up in the district, then the work is never going to get done in the first place. So I personally think that it's fine the way it is, but I'd probably have to see the specific wording of it, which I have not seen. So that's just, that's it for me.
I will get that shared to you, Max, in just one second while Sarah's speaking.
Thank you.
Max, it's that bolded sentence. It's the second bullet. That's what we're proposing adding.
Perfect.
Sarah?
So I think the way that you guys have described what you're trying to do is I'm completely supportive of. I don't think that extra bullet actually is, represents that. Well, to me, the way I read that was like, you want to be more trained. Like it's more of like, I read it more as like a communication, like you want to share more of what's happening within the committee. And maybe that was just my interpretation. But I agree with what Nick said, actually, and I think the conversations that you're having are just another data point. So I actually think you're well within your charge as it is without the amendment. Personally, to have those conversations, I think what this to me highlights is there, there's processes that we have in place that are obviously not working, right? Or maybe we just don't have them in place if, if people are coming to the committee and not following the processes, right? So I guess I would expect that one of the recommendations that comes to the board is how do we change our system so that people do feel more comfortable that we have a process in place to, to address some of these things? And I guess I would just commend you guys for creating a safe space where people can share that information. So, you know, if, if you guys think this is what you, this is a change that you need in order to be able to do the work productively, then I'll support it. But I actually think that you're within your rights with it as, as is, quite frankly.
So I actually, I think
So, I actually, I think, I think, to Shannon's point, the charge, the way it was written, doesn't necessarily give the committee that space. And that's my interpretation, right? So, I feel like the intent behind the amendment was to make sure that the committee knows that they have that leeway, and that that is being sanctioned by the Board, that's being supported by the Board, that they have this leeway to have these kind of additional discussions about things that might not have necessarily been data that was derived from the climate survey, because that's very specific to the charge. And so, I certainly, you know, like Sarah said, I certainly support an amendment that gives the committee that, that leeway and shows our support of those important conversations, because I, I agree, just, you know, you, to some extent, you don't work in a vacuum. And this idea that you would all sit there as individuals and say, oh, this, this event happened, but we're, we're not going to talk about that. We're, we're going to only speak to the data of the climate survey. That's, that's really challenging. The part where I get hung up a little bit is, and I say this out of concern for my, the Board members, is that this is a board-sanctioned committee, and that it is a committee that's different than any of our other committees, in that it is chaired by a Board member, but that it has administration, staff, students, and community members on it. And those people do not necessarily all operate within the same confines that a typical board-sanctioned committee would operate under. There's a lot of chain of command. There's a lot of gray area there. And so, I actually would like to see the change to a charge, protect is not the right word, because that's, it implies that, something that I don't mean. But to make sure that the expectations, that any of those chain of command type things, you know, that the expectation is clear, because I do worry that things are potentially, with this charge as written, that we are potentially open to people viewing the DEI as a direct line to raise something, to elevate something to the level of the Board. And that, to me, is not, that's, that's the hangup for me. Kristin, and then Leanne.
Yeah, I think I would echo what you said, Ailish. And I think I also have a little bit of concern about sensitive stuff being discussed within the committee. Like, these are things that are going to involve students. And I think, to your point, we know our role, that everyone on this committee does have different roles. And I think we just need to be careful of the sensitive nature of some of the things that might come up. And the other point that I wanted to make, I think it's more of a wording thing, because when I first read this, and it said, raise awareness of work happening in the district, I was really excited, because I was like, oh, the committee's going to be charged with sharing some of the interesting things that they have encountered through studying their data. But it doesn't sound like that's actually the intention. So, I guess I would maybe reword it in a way, because this is the charge of the committee, to raise awareness, right? So, I don't know. I don't know the best way to word it. It's not, I think it's just semantics, but it's not raising awareness to the rest of the district. It's raising awareness within the committee. And I think that's an important distinction, because that's not how I read this when I first read the amendment. That was my only other point.
Yeah, you're, you're right. It was to raise awareness within the committee of work that's happening within, within the district. And to your point about privacy information and protecting students' private information, that is absolutely something that we take very seriously. We've had many talks about FERPA and how student, any conversations that are, that the administration is having, we cannot discuss in that committee. So, there is no conversations about discipline, about the procedures, about investigations that are occurring. None of the, none of the committee is privy to that information, because it would be a violation.
Thank you.
Leanne, and then Nick?
Two points. One, I agree that, yes, we need to have a way to ensure that these topics can come in and that you are supported all the way through, and that that chain of command is being met and adhered to. So, I'd like to offer a, like, a friendly amendment to it, Shannon, where it's within the confines of the Board's existing policies. And this way, the conversations can come up, and you're not put into a box of trying to take an action, but you're able to bring it back to policy and say, these are the pathways to find resolution for the issues that are being met.
So, can you say, can you say the full friendly amendment again?
Can, Diane, would you mind bringing up Shannon's wording? Thank you. Raise awareness of work happening in the district within the Board's existing policies.
Leanne, what about adding awareness to the committee? Do you agree with that amendment portion, too?
I would agree with that, too. And I know this is completely out of order, because if I make an amendment, we're supposed to talk about the amendment and motion it. But I do have another point, so I don't know if I make it before I truly make the motion and we second it.
If Shannon, for a point of order, Leanne, if Shannon accepts your friendly amendment, then we don't need to vote on it.
Perfect.
If you accept the friendly amendment, then we are, then the, the conversation is just continuous.
My question is, what does that mean for, if work is happening outside of, like, if we don't have a policy that talks about the video that Diane mentioned, how do we have a conversation around that?
What, I would look at it from, from the point of view, Shannon, you can still have the conversation, but if you're being asked to take an action or to make a recommendation, it would be, have you followed the policy first? So that, rather than jumping over the levels of, take it to a building administrator, take it to central office, it would be coming directly to the Board and skipping all of that, which is not what the charge should be of the committee. So, it's giving you those boundaries so that the conversation can happen. You're not expected to fix the situation.
Gotcha. And that would actually, I think, alleviate the concern about making sure that we're staying within our boundaries and parameters and not overstepping administration.
Exactly.
Okay, so it sounds like Shannon accepts your friendly amendment. Leanne, can you read the full statement again for us, please?
Sure, in a moment.
Or Shannon, either one.
Okay, the way, the one I wrote down, raise, raise awareness, comma, to the committee, comma, of work happening in the district within the Board's existing policies. Did I get that right, Leanne?
Within the boundaries of the Board's existing policies.
Within the boundaries. Do you need me to read that again?
Sure.
Okay, so, raising awareness, comma, to the committee, comma, of work happening in the district within the boundaries of the Board's existing policies. Perfect. Thank you, Leanne.
Oh, sure. And then my next comment, it's a little bit uncomfortable, so I don't know how to, I'm not, I'm trying to be sensitive, kind of to the next point earlier of how I asked this question. If these conversations are happening, and if it's impacting how the data is viewed, how does that get relayed back to the Board, who won't have, who won't have been involved in those conversations? And we're just looking at raw data, and we don't have the same context that you have as those motions come forward. So, we're working from two different playbooks. How do we stay in alignment with a recommendation you make and be supportive of the work that you're doing?
I'm pausing because I'm thinking.
I was going to say, I know, we all know it's not rhetorical. We're all.
Just kind of processing for a moment here.
I know.
Is there a way to maybe work into, like, this amendment to have a more regular report back to the Board, maybe of some of the topics that actually got added beyond the data that you're already working with, say, oh, you know, this is the, we don't have to know the entire conversation, but just like, this is, or these are the handful of things we discussed at our last meeting, just as part of your committee update?
I mean, I'm so torn on this topic, because it's not about me or what I feel as a committee member or as a representative of the Board. It's about the people that are engaging in that work, that are impacted by the actions of others and have suffered trauma and are sharing potentially personal stories. And so, it's really difficult, right? Because the public has this right to know, you have this need to know. And we all need to be respectful of the fact that these people have suffered potentially harm. And our insistence on, on sharing that information is, could be harmful to them and could diminish the, the accuracy of the conversation and, and discourage the sharing. And so, you know, because on the one hand, we want, we, as a Board, I think, want it to be very objective, right? We want the, the numbers, and we want the, the recommendations. And to a large extent, that's the work that's occurring there. However, there is some context that's more subjective in, in nature or personal in nature that we rely on to sort of flesh that data out. And that's the part that I don't feel comfortable saying, okay, we can do that, because it's not my, it's not my personal emotional well-being that is being threatened. And, and having heard clearly that that's a potential source of emotional trauma to committee members, I can't advocate for that. And it's a quandary. I mean, because I think that, you know, you, you and the Board and the public have a right to know. On the other hand, we all want the best information, and that's really how we pick the committee. And we're, and, and in order to get that, then we're setting them up to fail. And so, I just really want, I, I don't know the answer to it. It's something I've thought about a lot. I've discussed a lot. I heard clearly from the committee members that they have a lot of concern about that, and I need to respect their feelings. I mean, and I'm one member here on the Board, but I do want to bring that to everybody's attention. And it's really hard for us, I think, if we're not impacted personally, to fully understand that.
And thank you for the context, Alicia. And I totally, I really do understand the point. It's just the, I don't even know how to say it, with, you have more context and the why you're passionate about something. And it could potentially have Board members, whether it's this sitting Board or future Board, if they don't have that same context, or we may not look as caring or as compassionate or as engaged, because we don't have the information, and we are looking at it, to your point, very clinically, because we don't have that context. And it's, I agree, it's a quandary, and it's not an easy piece. I don't have the right answer. It's just, how do we find that middle ground so that you're honoring what they need, and us and future Boards have what we need in order to make the right decisions?
And it would be really easy if we could say, let's boil it down to, like, a subject matter or something. But I think that in a community like Scarborough, it would, no matter how distilled that information becomes, it would be identifiable.
I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I appreciate that.
I'm going to recognize Diane, and then Nick, I'm coming to you. Just as an observation, as a member of the sitting committee, I think some of what rings true for me as I listen to this conversation is, this is a relatively new committee that has got together neat. The charge of the committee, as originally written, is deep. It is emotional. And I think that as we are just beginning to come together, there is a heightened recognition of the need for the work through the use of example. And I think that's kind of what the committee has been sitting in. And as, you know, one member of the committee said in our last meeting, these examples are just even more reason as to why we need to move forward and start doing the real work, right? And set forth action plans.
Yeah, I agree, because that's where I struggle as well, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the examples of the stories we're hearing are driving the recommendations. I think they're exactly what you're saying. They highlight, what Diane's saying, they highlight the need for the work. And maybe, maybe what they do is shine light on instances that we didn't know were even occurring. So, that's where I see the, the examples really playing a piece or impacting the committee. So, I'm, I'm having the same, that's why I'm spending a lot of time processing, Leanne. I'm not, I'm not sure what the middle ground is.
Nick, and then I'm going to insert myself again.
I'd originally raised my hand to put it on a friendly amendment, but don't worry, I'm not going to do that, because Leanne's basically accomplished everything I wanted to do. So, there's no reason to put another option on the table. But I did want to keep my hand up just to say that the reason I support that language and that friendly amendment, as well as the one I was going to make, is because it keeps the focus of the group, kind of like as Diane was just saying, on, on the core mission, which is this idea of analyzing the data to come to a big-picture action plan to present to this Board. And then, once that actual plan is in place, and a living, breathing plan, because new things will come up that will, that will impact it, that they'll monitor the plan and all of that. So, that part of the, the charge, I think, remains true, and in my opinion, is the core of the charge. And as much as those, as much as individual stories and stuff are critical, because they help people who live outside of those realities to understand just how serious this is in all communities, including Scarborough, at some point, I, I think it's important to just keep the committee reminded that this work really is about kind of moving, figuring out the best way for us to move forward to ease that pain for our community. Instead, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to say this well, because I've done advocacy work myself, and I, I know what can happen in situations where it, it goes away from the idea of looking forward and instead becomes a place to build context of the past, and to spend a lot of time in that, which is critical at first to have, to have a base. But when you're going to move forward, that foundation is what you move forward from, not what you linger within. And so, I'll stop there, because I do think that Leanne's friendly amendment, and Shannon, and the work that you put in that language to start together, I feel like that keeps us on track with that. And that was, and that was my concern. That is less of a concern now.
Thanks, Nick. I'm actually going to go to Sarah, and then I will, no, it's okay. You go. Thank you.
I was just going to say, yeah, I understand where, like, Kristin and Leanne, you got, you're coming from in terms of the communication. To me, I kind of view this like any other committee, right? Like, it's Like it's, I don't know, everything that's happening in policy, you probably don't know everything that's happening in finance, but you know what is important and, and what is thematic and, and what you need to know in order to make a decision. And I think having, keeping the, the safety of that group is, is more important than me knowing the details. And I don't need to know the details in order to make the decision because it's your job to communicate that effectively to us in order to make a decision. So I'm supportive of leaving it the way it is.
So I, I think that the conversation is, is kind of wrapping up here. I feel like we are just about ready to vote. And so with that, I would say that, you know, as a reminder to all of us, we can put the DEI committee on the agenda to discuss as a full board as frequently as we think we need. This is an evolving situation. This is an evolving committee. This is the first time we've had a committee like this before. I know that Shannon had brought to me a request for a workshop. And so we have carved out workshop time for the DEI committee to come and actually have M A E C speak to the full board, which we have not done yet. And so there's going to be pieces of this as we, as we move along. And so I think it's important to, for the committee to advance their work, that we, you know, do make this amendment. And then, you know, as things come up or board members continue to have concerns or if members of the committee, you know, it's just like tonight, bring a concern to the chair, then the chair is able to say, okay, I think this really needs to be a full board discussion and we bring it back to the full board. And then I, and I will end with a request, which is kind of just something for the DEI committee to think about, is just making sure that we don't have a narrow pipeline for how things arrive at the DEI committee. And I don't have a solution for that. I don't know if that's something that we need to do outreach or communication or make sure that people understand like how to bring issues to the DEI because this committee does exist. And if you're going to be discussing things that happen, my concern is just people who know about the committee will, will channel their energy into the committee. And that that's not necessarily a representative voice, especially for, you know, the fact that we have lots of buildings, not just middle school and high school, who are, you know, more, maybe more able to advocate for themselves. So I just want to be careful that we don't develop a, or fall into a habit where we, people feel like they have access, but it's not equal access. So that would be my request. Is there any other final comments before we vote?
I would just say, I would just say, April, that all of the points raised tonight by the board are great points and they're all points that Shannon, Diana have discussed. So we're sensitive to them and, and we agree and, and it's, we're trying to work through it and include you in the journey.
Thank you, and thank you both for presenting that and having this discussion. With that, I think Diane, we are ready to vote on the main motion to approve the amendment as presented and as friendly amended by Leanne.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you all so much. Agenda item 9.0 is new business. Agenda item 9.1 is the S H S 2023 Italy trip. And I want to thank very much for your patience, Mr. Tronsolito. If you'd like to take the mic and give us an overview, that would be great. Thank you.
Don't want to mess up the, the tech communication system. And I kind of feel lucky that I actually came in person. I was going to be on the Zoom and maybe that worked out well. So thank you for the opportunity of having me here tonight to speak to you. I just wanted to come and inform you about plans for a Europe trip in late June of 2023. Is that right? Where are we now, 21? Yes, so two years from now. As you probably know, I was here before the board in the fall via Zoom to talk about a trip for next June of 2022, which has been a huge success in terms of students signing up. Why I'm coming two years before this tour? Generally, when we do student travel promotion, it's within a year to 18 months of travel. But I think giving it a two-year window of time, a lot of students have signaled that they like the idea of, gives them more time to plan, gives families more time to plan. From a financial point of view, it is often more cost effective working with EF tours, which I've already mentioned them many times. As you know, Scarborough High School has been working with EF for, I've been working with them for 11 years and we've had multiple student groups with the foreign language program, Latin, Spanish and French and myself. So EF definitely sees this as an advantage as well, too. So I'm seeking just awareness to you all that I am going to try to promote a tour in early June for two years from now to Italy, possibly a side trip to Croatia or some area of the Adriatic. But that is not entirely clear at this time, but it would be primarily to Italy. And we've had a strong interest in student travel in Scarborough High School in the past. The pandemic has definitely sidetracked us for a while, needless to say. And there seems to be a pent up, pent up interest and, I don't say demand, but pent up interest for sure in student travel. And the thing that I've probably talked about in the past more than a few times is how over the years, I was thinking about that, I was sitting here and like, how many students have I actually taken on student tours? Plus some, some of my colleagues who also have done student travel. I mean, we're talking hundreds, if not thousands of students over the years from Scarborough who have been able to go abroad and then ultimately have parlayed that experience into semester or a year abroad in college, internships abroad, and then ultimately even graduate study abroad. So it's, the ripple effect is, is huge. And it's great to see that kind of interesting despite the pandemic and that there is an ongoing interest in, in, in playing it forward. So just wanted to apprise you of all those plans. So thank you. But if you have questions, I'm happy to, to answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have questions? If you're on Zoom, I can't see your little blue hand, so you can just unmute. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Coming and presenting to us. It's always exciting when we talk about student travel. I know that that's something that, you know, we are all really excited and grateful that those students have that opportunity. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And just one final thing, as I'm standing here as a teacher from the high school, I just want to say to the board, thank you for all your support this year with the, just all the accommodations for the pandemic and for helping us do our jobs. I, I do think that the general mood in the high school is extremely positive and grateful toward all your leadership. So it's been a long year for a lot of us. The kids have been phenomenal. But without you all supporting us, there's no way we would have been able to navigate the way we have. And obviously, we're now making plans for the fall and for hopefully full, you know, in-class instruction. But obviously with accommodations that you all were discussing earlier tonight. So truly, I do think there is an enormous wellspring of great respect and gratitude for you. So thank you for all of that.
That's very kind.
Sure. Thank you.
Agenda item 9.2 is the meeting minutes of April 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, Diane?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 9.3 is appointments. Agenda item 9.3.1 is high school English Language Arts Lead Teacher.
So Daniel, excuse me, Daniel Wiley, 2020 and 2021 year, the amount of $1,000, which will come out of the general fund.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Diane?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 9.4 is the second reading of the FY22 school budget. And I will turn it over to Sarah because I'm sure she has all the numbers and all the amendments all written up.
The moment you've all been waiting for. Buckle up. Okay, you're gonna lose me on video when I go to my page, but that's fine. So the way it's gonna work, I'm gonna make a motion, like an original motion and then a number of amendments based on the changes that we've made since first reading. And then we'll vote on all those and then we'll go back to the main motion.
Okay.
All right, so move approval of the FY22 education budget as presented at the school board's first reading on March 18th, 2021.
Second?
You want me to, discussion?
Yeah, is there discussion and then, or I, I thought you were, you were saying you were gonna bundle them all together.
No, I don't think I can bundle them all together. So is there any discussion? Okay. So then, I'm gonna make, no, I'm gonna make an amendment.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is, yes.
Amendment to the, the first reading proposal. So move to, move approval to amend the FY22 education budget expenditures approved at the school board's first reading on March 18th as follows. The general fund operating budget, we're gonna reduce expenditure budget by $536,132. We're gonna add $300,000 in fund balance to non-tax revenue. All of these changes result in a reduction to the net general fund expenditure budget of $836,132. We're gonna amend the general fund expenditures gross budget will now total $55,683,014. And the amended general fund net budget will now total $49,945,444. I guess I can do these all together. So the adult education budget, we're gonna increase the expenditure budget by $1,950 as outlined in the supporting documents. We're gonna add $26,969 to non-tax revenues. All of these changes result in a reduction to the net adult education expenditure budget of $25,019, which will bring the amended adult education expenditure gross budget to $179,639. And the amended adult education net budget totals $65,481. The capital improvements budget will reduce the expenditure budget by $279,528. We're gonna add $286,250 to non-tax revenues. All of these changes will result in a reduction to the net school capital budget of $565,778, which brings the total amended capital improvements expenditures budget, a gross budget to $3,638,901. And the amended capital improvements net budget total to $655,351. And there's no changes to the school nutrition budget.
Thank you, Sarah. So now we need to vote on the amendments. So Diane, unless there's questions, I think we're probably all set.
Great. Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
So now we'll return to the main motion, which is to accept the general fund operating adult education, school nutrition and capital budget as amended.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Ms. Lind, Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a final motion that in the event that the Scarborough School Department receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, that pursuant to section J, 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 four. I think I got that right.
Sarah, I think you got, you've got the old one there.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's okay. J, 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 J was 2017. That's old news.
Oh, no. So.
Have we got the slide there, Diane?
Yeah, I can get it back.
Thanks, Kate.
Sorry. So out of order. I apologize, Madam Chair.
No worries.
Oh, you want me to read that?
You can say as presented, you can say statutory language as presented.
Okay. Move to approve the statutory language as presented?
Pursuant to Title 20.
Pursuant to Title 20 A M R S A 1491.
1485.
1491?
85.
85, sorry.
So moved.
Let me do that again, that was sloppy. So Kate had.
For the purposes of public record, I am 100% confident that this is fine, that you could, that we can say it as presented. But then in terms of our meeting minutes, if we could just ask Kelly to include the entire language, I think that that more than covers us and you can just.
Kate had just suggested that I read the whole thing, which is, if, for, just, just to make it official.
I, I agree with April, as long as it's recorded as this is the, the item that you voted on, Sarah, we're not gonna comment you.
Okay, cool. Then, carry on.
Nope. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the statutory language as presented.
So moved. Second?
Discussion? Thank you very much, Diane.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. With that, I believe, agenda item 10.0 is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Discussion? I just have a couple of quick things I want to say before we go. For our June 3rd meeting, I'm getting daggers, goodness. For our June 3rd meeting, I just want to remind everyone and the public that the indoor requirements, spacing requirements will have changed. And so we will be able to accommodate more people in chambers for our June 3rd meeting. At that evening event, we will be honoring our retirees. And Mr. Bennett will be guest chairing for us. And so that will be an exciting opportunity for him, I'm sure. I will be right here to co-pilot. And with that, I think we're ready to call the vote.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone.